Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, July 2nd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Council members Witherspoon, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop. Mr. Brzezinski is absent.
I would please stand for a moment of silence and to pledge allegiance of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the beloved Constitution that is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the June 18th meeting and bills for payment on July 3rd and 11th, members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.
Is there anyone here for repository sales? Is there anyone here for repository sales? Is there anyone here for repository sales? Hearing none, Lori.
This is public comments. If you could come up and state your name and your municipality, and you have five minutes.
My name is Freda Tepfer, and I live in the city of Erie, and I have a number of things I want to get to. One of them is a loan. It's number seven in new agenda, a million-dollar, 15-year, City of Erie Enterprise loan to Gannon for Institute for Health and Cyber Knowledge. So they don't participate in the payment in lieu of taxes. They've already been given a million and a half or more by the county, and they've taken over part of our library despite a lot of public protest. And they are one of the worst offenders of the city's sidewalk closure ordinance, which is not supposed to be more than 180 days of sidewalk closures maximum during construction. Why are we loaning, why are we loaning this private, supposed nonprofit, very wealthy institution, a million dollars? There are many other entities that could use that money, and I hope that you don't just run through the new business and not address that. Second, when I was here for the Environmental Advisory Council, I thought, gee, I'd like to fill my water bottle, but there's no water bottle filling station in this building accessible to the public. It's available to employees or anybody who gets to go past the sacred door. There is a water fountain, so you do have plumbing here, and you could easily put in a water bottle filling station. In fact, the city ought to have a requirement that new construction and remodels include water bottle filling stations so that we can reduce the amount of plastic bottle waste. Another business that does business with the city is waste management, and I can't tell you how many times I've reported the poor condition of the sidewalks on Raspberry Street, which is part of a route to school. Waste Management owns a large portion of that unmaintained sidewalk south of the railroad tracks, north of rail. Anyway, it's on Raspberry, and it's having a moment with that, but it is north of the tracks, and it's overgrown with overhanging branches, and the sidewalk is poorly maintained. They are a contractor of the city. They should not be allowed to have our sidewalks in condition like that. The Home Rule Charter, if there is going to be the Home Rule Charter on the ballot in November, and if there is a requirement for 200 signatures, which is 100 more than the City Council candidate needs, the city should host a petition signing event, and I hope it's not between August 1st and 15th because I'll be out of town during half of the time that I could collect signatures. And if you're going to postpone it, we would like to know sooner than later. There's a new technology for accessible pedestrian signals, and that it's a wireless system for putting in accessible pedestrian signals. It's only possible to use in a place where there's already one of the pedestrian signs. Doesn't have to be pedestrian push buttons, but a good example of that would be SaaS press and ACE. It's much cheaper than doing the other kind of installation, and another place it could be done is at 26 and Peach, but the city should use this technology in more places to install accessible pedestrian signals. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Ortenaby, and I would like to address the council on the recent severe heat event we had. Before I do, I want to thank council for having the meeting and thank my fellow citizens for attending, taking part, actually, in our local government, all of us here. Just to sort of set the feel, as it were, the role of government, first and foremost, is to represent the people. Governments in democracies are intended to represent the will of the people and make decisions on our behalf. In order to do this, there's a number of primary functions that we rely on government for. Primary functions of government are to establish and maintain order, provide security, and promote the general welfare of its citizens. To provide some context, here are some more details on what is included in promoting the general welfare. Governments provide essential services that individuals and private entities may not be able to provide efficiently or equitably. This includes things like infrastructure, public health, education, social welfare, and economic stability. With regard to the recent heat wave, three of these seem to me to be fairly pertinent: infrastructure, public health, and social welfare. First, infrastructure. It's not just roads and bridges, public transportation and the like. It also includes the necessary infrastructure for dealing with emergencies like a heat wave. In short, the planning and resources needed to confront and alleviate an emergency. Second, public health: ensuring access to clean water, sanitation, and healthcare, as well as responding to health crises. Health crises are not limited to pandemics or other communicable diseases. It extends to environmental crises that impact the health of our citizens: severe storms, floods, and yes, severe heat events, which, like other environmental crises, are on the rise and likely to increase in severity and frequency. Third, social welfare: programs that provide a safety net for vulnerable populations. Environmental crises, like the recent heat wave, disproportionately affect our most vulnerable populations: our unhoused, our low-income and indigent populations, our low-wage workers, the elderly, and the ill. These populations, our fellow citizens and your constituents, are most reliant on government in times of extreme stress, times when they need, sorry, times when they need and the need and/or private entities cannot provide essential services efficiently or equitably. We were fortunate to have a small group of concerned citizens, along with the Erie Downtown Partnership, who, in a very short-term, ad hoc, volunteer fashion, were able to mount a response. A tent was borrowed, approximately 100 cases of water, 2,400 bottles, were donated by individuals and businesses. Citizen volunteers manned the tent, handed out water, as well as offering whatever other support they could provide. These kind-hearted people and business owners are surely to be commended. But here we face the difference between grassroots citizen action and government action. As fantastic as our fellows' response was, their limited resources were depleted in a little over two days. Imagine how much more impact, how much more relief a larger, city-government-driven plan could have offered. Given that we are just at the beginning of summer, it is likely that we will face this challenge again soon and in the years to come. I implore City Council to work diligently towards the general welfare, to draft emergency plans for such heat waves, and identify resources, both financial and human, to be better prepared for these sorts of events in the future. Erie is a lovely, vibrant city with incredible people. Its government can be at its best when it has the support of these people. Its people are at their best when they have the support of their government and elected officials. Thank you again for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
Hello, hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. My name is Wednesday Kennedy, and I am also going to speak about the heat situation, but I'm going to talk about it in sort of a climate refugee context. So I moved here last year from New York City after living there for a decade. I was looking for my dream home, and I was never going to be able to afford a Victorian mansion in Manhattan, so I was looking around. And I found this beautiful house in Erie, Pennsylvania, a small lake town I'd never fucking heard of, and I showed up, and I loved it here. I loved the co-op. I loved the sign in the window that said, "We welcome all genders and all sexual orientations and all races." I loved my neighbors. I loved the people I met. I love the community that I feel here. I chose Erie in part because it's positioning itself as a climate haven, and I hear the levees groaning. The floodwaters are coming, and I am not the only climate refugee who's going to show up here. And I'm also not the only person who's going to show up here who cares about the people who don't have a choice to be here, who cares about the people who don't have the resources that I have, who aren't Harvard-educated, who didn't come with a remote tech job and salary. I, like I said, I moved here from New York, and I am a New Yorker in my heart, which means I walk everywhere, including to this meeting this morning. And when I was walking downtown, I walked past a lot of beautiful landscaping that I imagine the city is responsible for, including outside of this building, and the flowers looked gorgeous. And I imagine that during the next heat wave, we will somehow find a way to make sure that those flowers continue to thrive. We will find a way to make sure that they are watered, even if it doesn't rain. We will find a way to make sure that this building looks beautiful. And what I'm asking you is to explain to me why it is that apparently you feel it's your responsibility to make sure that the flowers outside of this building are kept alive, and yet somehow it's my responsibility and the responsibility of the other people in this room to make sure that our neighbors don't dehydrate to death.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Nathan, and I would like to speak to you today about implementing permanent public cooling infrastructure across the city of Erie. A couple weeks ago, the city experienced unusually high temperatures for over 48 consecutive hours as part of the unnatural heat wave felt across the United States. I call this heat wave unnatural because it would be inaccurate to frame the event as normal or inevitable. The increasing frequency and intensity of nationwide heat waves are direct results of the global climate crisis, a crisis caused not by the billions of disenfranchised people worldwide, but by a select few who control billions of dollars, who finance big oil and gas, and who conspire to plunder and profit at our expense. A city as global and diverse as Erie is a microcosm of the world. As city leadership, you are called to represent your constituents, the vast majority of whom are not responsible for extreme heat, but who are disproportionately impacted by it. One of the most simple and effective solutions to extreme heat is public cooling infrastructure. Public cooling infrastructure includes public showers, air-conditioned community centers, and hydration stations. We already have public showers at beaches 8 and 11, where anyone can wash off at any time to secure the comfort and dignity afforded by simple bodily hygiene. However, these spaces are often unkempt, and they are largely inaccessible to Erie residents due to their location on the peninsula. Likewise, the downtown library is inaccessible to most pedestrians, and many other air-conditioned community shelters are already operating at full capacity. The creation of a climate emergency shelter in the heart of our city could help to satisfy increasing demand for sanctuary during periods of extreme heat and cold. Such an endeavor would not be the first of its kind. During last year's heat waves, the Cleveland Liberation Center provided free access to fresh, potable water, air conditioning, and restrooms on both the east and west sides of their city. Locations like the Seneca One Drop in Irving, New York, and the Petro Travel Center in Dupont, Pennsylvania, offer clean public showers at all hours of the day, every day. Most recently, the Erie Downtown Partnership launched a pop-up cooling station at Perry Square, which distributed over 100 cases of drinking water to those in need. We do not need to reinvent the wheel. These efforts serve as exemplary models of expanding and improving public cooling infrastructure in our city. Establishing a permanent climate emergency shelter in downtown Erie is not a pipe train. It's a means of adapting to our changing environment, something that human societies have done for thousands of years. In the context of climate apocalypse, taking bold measures to keep your constituents safe is far more natural than asking us to navigate unprecedented heat waves on our own. As someone who performs manual labor for five to six hours on end without a guaranteed break at a facility in Erie County that is not air-conditioned, I sympathize deeply with the hundreds of unhoused folks who call Erie home. During this past heat wave, many without secure housing spent twice the length of my shift in boiling heat. I sympathize with Erie's elderly population, who suffer disproportionate rates of social isolation and are particularly vulnerable to death by extreme heat. I feel for folks with physical disabilities, who already spend more time in the sun than necessary trying to navigate hostile architecture downtown. I feel for folks with mental health conditions like depression, anxiety, and schizophrenia, who, statistically speaking, are more likely to experience hospitalization during periods of extreme heat. And I feel for Erie's black and brown residents, who, as a result of ongoing systematic racial housing discrimination, are more likely to find themselves in hotter neighborhoods with more asphalt and concrete and less natural cover. Council members, building public cooling stations is not just about protecting our most fundamental survival needs. It is about affirming our right to a public life in an increasingly hostile environment. We have to continue to adapt as a species and as a city if we are, if we, as unhoused, poor, working, disabled, elderly, and disenfranchised people, hope to survive the unfolding climate crisis. I hope that you, as leaders in city government, will assume the full responsibility of your roles in representing our interests and seriously considering launching an initiative to expand and improve existing public cooling infrastructure in our communities. Thank you.
Nathan, if you could give your name and your municipality for the record.
My name is Nathan. I actually live in Fairview Township.
Okay. Last name for the record.
George.
Thank you.
George, thank you.
My name's Jane Deutschlander, and I'm from Mill Creek Township. I'm not as eloquent or extensive as those that I'm following. I appreciate all that they had to add to my feelings, so this is mostly based on my feelings of what needs to be done. I'm here to ask that the city make it a priority to provide cooling stations and water to our unhoused population. Like me, I'm sure that the majority of those in this room have never not had a roof over their head or water or tap water at hand. However, in the city of Erie, we have a large population of people in these circumstances. We also know that due to climate change, the heat wave we recently experienced will not be our last. The city cannot turn a blind eye to the needs of this vulnerable community. Providing a temporary cooling station and water in central locations such as Perry Square is truly not a monumental undertaking, but to those it will aid, it's essential. We need solutions and aid during these extreme weather conditions. The days of public water fountains are gone, especially since COVID. I love the idea that was brought up about water bottle refilling stations. Perhaps those could be made more available within the city. The community shelters do their best to support and provide essentials, but they are overwhelmed by the need, and this need isn't going away. With increased housing costs and now cuts to Medicaid funding for these individuals, it will only increase. I know that the library was a suggestion as a place to go and cool. Perhaps because of the barrier of the bayfront, shuttle services could be provided during heat waves for individuals to get to the library to cool down. In light of what's happening in our country and the lack of support of the marginalized, I'm looking to our city to do better. These are people: sons, daughters, fathers, mothers, but for the grace of God, go I. Please make it a priority to step up and find ways to be prepared to support those in need during our extreme weather conditions. If we plan in advance when it happens, which we know it will, we'll be ready to take care of it. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing solutions.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16534, Official Ordinance 442025, and Ordinance appropriating the sum of $261,142 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG 25 projects. Sponsored by Council Member Titus, seconded by Council Member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16534, and now known as Official File Ordinance 442025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 442025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16535, Official Ordinance 452025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,775,245 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also HUD, and $5,000 program income, for a total of $2,780,245, for community development block grant CD 25 projects. Sponsored by Council Member Titus, seconded by Council Member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16535, and now known as Official File Ordinance 452025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 452025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16536, Official Ordinance 462025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $805,148.06 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the following Home M25 projects. Sponsored by Council Member Titus, seconded by Council Member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16536, and now known as Official File Ordinance 462025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 462025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16537, Official Ordinance 472025, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Erie, the city determining to incur lease-rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue note in the maximum principal amount of $414,900 to be authorized and issued by Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction, alteration, and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about this city, including but not limited to the customer side, galvanized service line replacement project Phase II and paying related cost fees and expenses, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form, maximum guaranteed amounts, and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances. Sponsored by Council Member Schaff, seconded by Council Member Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16537, and now known as Official File Ordinance 472025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 472025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16538, Official Ordinance 482025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $79,898.60 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from the ARP Revenue Replacement Funds, sponsored by Council Member Nelson, seconded by Council Member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16538, and now known as Official File Ordinance 482025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 482025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16539, Official Ordinance 492025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $161,522 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the 2025 Auto Theft Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Council Member Schaff, seconded by Council Member Troop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16539, and now known as Official File Ordinance 492025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 492025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16540, Official Ordinance 502025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $190,961 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. 2025 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. This is for insurance fraud. Sponsored by Council Member Schaff, seconded by Council Member Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16540, and now known as Official File Ordinance 502025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 502025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16541, Official Ordinance 512025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,097,563 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the City of Erie Capital Fund and will be used to fund capital expenditures. Sponsored by Council Member Nelson, seconded by Council Member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16541, and now known as Official File Ordinance 512025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 512025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16542, Official Ordinance 522025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $143,520.30 for expenditure from the Stormwater Fund balance. These funds were appropriated in 2024 to pay for stormwater improvements related to the Coquah Bridge project and were not expended in 2024. The project is ongoing, and the funds need to be reappointed for 2025. Sponsored by Council Member Troop, seconded by Council Member Nelson, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16542, and now known as Official File Ordinance 522025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 522025, finally, by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number 16543, Official Ordinance 532025- Council File Number 16543, Official Ordinance 532025, an ordinance amending Article 1129 Quality of Life violations to amend and/or update the illegal burning subsection, to provide clarity of the rules and responsibilities of residents with regard to fires, and to simplify the regulations and rules of residence that conduct an open burning and/or that are enforced by the fire department. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Troop, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16543, and now known as Official File Ordinance 532025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 522025, finally by yea six nay zero.
Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16544, amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, namely Article 7 of the zoning code, and specifically to amend sections 701, 702, 703, 704, 705, 706, 707, 708, 710, and 799, which defines the duties and structure of the Historic Review Commission, streamlines the review process for historic preservation application, revises the nomination process, explains the certificate of appropriateness process, and promotes the preservation of the city's historic structure, objects, and/or Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Titus, that City Council File Ordinance Number 16544, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmembers Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16544 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File 16545, appropriating the sum of $11,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, Penelec Generator revenue. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, that City Council File Ordinance Number 16545, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmember Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Number 16545 by yea six nay zero on first Council File 16546, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $16,322.02 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof for a fire company and emergency medical service, FCEMS, grant from the official, from the Office of the State Fire Commissioner to purchase a battery operating tool. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaff, seconded by Councilmember Troop, that Council File Ordinance 16546, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Councilmember Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16546 by yea six nay zero on first reading.
Motion to move the balance.
It's been moved.
Any separations? Any other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda, Councilmembers Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and This is sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the Enterprise Zone Loan Review Committee approval of the following loan be formally ratified. Gannon University First Descent Biomedical Project for the Institute for Health and Cyber Knowledge, the amount of $1 million for 15 years for a $5,000 fee. These funds have been made available through the City of Erie Enterprise Zone revolving loan fund and loan repayments. The loan will be charged against account number 3100001007. The interest rate is fixed at 2.99% per annum. A one-time loan processing fee based on half of 1% of the amount financed will be assessed to each client. The solicitor's office will assist with the preparation of the loan documents for these transactions. Council further directs the proper city officials are authorized to sign the necessary documents and agreements effectuating the same.
Chair, may I go ahead? The reason I pulled this and separated is I wanted to highlight many of the comments or the comments that were made during a public comment today. I think that they're points that we have brought up several times, specifically around the accessibility and equity within the sidewalks when construction is happening. I understand the collaboration and the business that Gannon is bringing downtown. I know that we, as a city, are, we need a lot of what they are bringing, especially with the innovative ideas with the students who are coming and hopefully staying. However, this is a concern that has come up multiple times and one that we do need some accountability and responsibility around. We need to make sure that if construction is happening, that people are able, especially those who need a clear sidewalk, are able to pass through. And so I'm calling a special attention to this, that I'm asking Gannon to come up with some better resolutions and a better plan and present that for us so that we can vote with this with confidence. I do think the initiative that they are investing in here is an important one. It's invaluable and will be life-saving with what this project can accomplish, but I am incredibly concerned of what that means in the meantime for city residents who are disabled. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the issue?
Yes. I want to point out, this is, you know, we have sort of a parentheses underneath this one on the agenda of the First Descent Biomedical Project. Like this is, this loan, this loan is more for the business that's going in there as far as how that funding is being directed. This is, this is to provide a build-out for them within Gannon's property. So, less so about the school, because I know we've been getting some concerns about that, more so about the business build-out. These guys have been, had the opportunity to meet them about two years ago. This has been a project that's been underway for a couple of years. They're coming up from Tampa, and this is a, this is a pretty exciting opportunity to bring really good jobs into our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Voting on the resolution, members Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Resolution passes yea six nay zero. Council President, this takes us to committee reports.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilwoman Jasmine Flores.
I don't have much of a report today because I know that we want to get the meeting going. I just wanted to speak on the matter of, I work with individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism, so I keep them out in the community. So of the temperature, heat wave, I did spend a lot of time at the Blasco Library, and a lot of people did. Our library is such a staple in our community, and it is a safe haven for those unhoused and just people who need to get out of their house and want to stay cool or warm, and they need internet access. So I do understand that we need more community spaces, and I agree that, you know, our most vulnerable communities need to be prioritized more, so I would like to see more efforts being made, just because it's not the community's job, but it's great that our community cares so much. So I do sympathize and I do understand. And with the Blasco being closed this weekend for the Fourth of July holiday, I am concerned on how people are going to go to the bathroom and get water and things of that nature. So it is an issue that we do need to address. And I know Councilmember Schaff was a big advocate for the bottle filling station that's in Perry Square when she was still a community member, if I'm not mistaken. So there are efforts that we have pushed, and hopefully we can push additional ones. I just wanted to mention that with the holiday weekend being this weekend, there are going to be a lot of people doing fireworks. We have a lot of community members who have PTSD. We have a lot of animals. We have a lot going on this weekend, so I just want people to be mindful of everything and, you know, be careful, be safe. We wish people wouldn't do them, but they're going to do what they want to do. And if you are going to fire off fireworks, please be mindful of the houses that are close and your fingers, just because this is important. We need our digits. So as someone who works in the medical field, just, I want people to be careful this weekend and to also acknowledge that we do need to do more for our unhoused and our elderly and our disabled community members. Thank you.
My only committee assignment that I had the last two weeks was the Airport Authority. It was a very quick meeting. The most exciting part was they had a resolution to accept some private investment occurring there of, it looks like it's going to be about a million dollars. So that's, that was a notable piece of progress from that meeting to discuss the, you know, the number of heat wave concerns that we had. For those that are unfamiliar with it, I pastor the church that's on Peach Street that hosts the Upper Room, and I chair the board of the Upper Room. So if you drive by there this week, you'll see that we're getting a new roof. We had to make sure we did that after the heat wave for the sake of keeping the Upper Room open. That is the, of the various shelters in town, that is the lowest barrier of entry. You don't have to be sober to go there. You don't have to have a mental health diagnosis to go there. The problem is you have to go up steps, and we don't have air conditioning. So, number of different issues. It's just a poor little congregation that opens up the second floor Sunday School classrooms. So, you know, I've had a lot of experience, you know, secondhand experience of working with these populations, serving with them. The resources are, you know, are difficult, and, you know, it has been left on the community in a number of ways. You know, but it is, it is exciting to see the way that the city steps up to that plate, you know, as compared to surrounding municipalities, you know, that we end up being the place that does provide those resources, the water filling station and fountain that Councilwoman Schaff had advocated for in her previous term, and, you know, a lot of the specific allocations to focus on these things, certainly short of what needs done. The needs are always visible to us, but do appreciate the efforts you guys put in this past week with the, with the water station in Perry Square. Thanks.
Dr. Titus?
Thank you, Chair. So my liaison spots that has happened since our last meeting is, we had a zoo board meeting. I can't emphasize enough the urgency of reaching some resolution here. I know that we have several meetings that are happening this week, and all the involved entities are talking, but we really need to move into an implementation phase here. We've got three entities, three bodies right now that are developing out their budgets and their planning, and they're trying to think long-term. So I know Council and the administration is committed, but I just can't emphasize enough the urgency that we need to, that we need to get a solution forward here. EMTA had a board meeting on 6/23. The meeting, you know, they had two of their new board members who had been seated. They will not have a public meeting in July as they will be doing a board training, and they're committed to, you know, ensuring the community needs are being met. They had a successful celebration, their annual celebration that they do, and there was a lot of discussion during public comment around making sure that in the next time that a board member is seated, that it is somebody who is actively using EMTA so that we can have a rider perspective on the board as well. I wanted to also touch in a little bit on the Home Rule Charter. There's been a lot of discussion around this. We'll talk more about this at our next meeting, but we are moving in the direction of putting forward a new resolution and a new ordinance that's going to move this to the primary of 2026 with the intent of, well, there's a few things here. One, expanding the definition, because right now it is kind of locking that commission into just looking at the Home Rule Charter. We're going to add a few more definitions, so there's more opportunity to look, and it's giving more time so that instead of having to rush into the next 13 weeks, we're going to have more time, and we'll move it to the spring. And then taking into account that there's going to be an administration shifting, and so that that, the new administration that is coming in is going to be part of this process through the beginning of moving in. On 7/26, conducted a training with Dr. Kristi Ginebus at the Blasco Library. We did this on the Human Relations Commission, specifically going over protected classes and knowing the county ordinance, making sure that people know their rights and their protections. If anybody would like to have Kristi or Dr. Ginebus come out there, have more questions, please reach out to her at HRC@ErieCountyPA.gov. And I think that, and one other thing I wanted to say too is, thank you to everybody who had come in today to talk about the initiatives that we need to, especially the crisis planning moving forward. I would really like to get some contact information from all of you so we can sit down and talk a little bit further, because it's more of a listening, and I don't really get to ask more questions or take in. So I'd like to get some contact before we leave. And I can see Counselor Nelson, I forgot to say something. When, by moving, thank you, Mr. Nelson, I just pointed out too, that when we, going back to the Home Rule Charter, by moving it to the primary of 2026, it will still be implemented in that same year. So we're still looking at the implementation of 2028, so the year that it goes into effect has not changed. It will just be when we begin the process. Now I'll conclude.
Thank you very much. Councilman Troop?
Council President, I have nothing to report today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Water Authority meeting and the Juneteenth celebration that had to be carried over at the food hall because of the rainy weather. I caught the music of Johnny Evans, attended the World Refugee Day celebration that was a wonderful event at Perry Square. Mr. President, you and I got to see the first-ever basketball court mural at the Sisters of St. Joseph at Ruby Schaff Park and met the artist Caesar Westbrook. That was wonderful event. The UECDC presented a vision of Burton School, and there's information that you can look at online. The Barrend University had two groups of students that envisioned different views of the Burton School revitalization, and now it's just a part of getting the people on board, the tenants, and the money to make this dream come true, and you can find it online as well. I really affirm people who spoke today. I have been an advocate. We have a water filling station, like they mentioned, at Perry Square, and there's even a low one for the dogs. In traveling to Savannah and Charleston and some hot climate areas, the businesses often have little lemonade stands outside of their businesses and water for the dogs as you walk by. So that would be a nice thing. I know the MHA and the shelters in Erie do their best. The Lake Shore Towing has restrooms available for free, and when I worked at Erie City Hall for a year, I can attest to many people knowing that Erie City Hall has public restrooms and a respite in our hot summers, and they do come in and use it. I attended the Water Authority, not the Water Authority, I went to the Port Authority, and I spoke at the Port Authority about wanting a public restroom down and I spoke at the Port Authority about wanting a public restroom down at Dobbin's Landing and they said, there's the Portajons there. But in 90-degree heat, Portajons, and if you have a little one, little children, they have that fear of falling in. So, it's really not the best situation. And I had always gone to the public restroom there and it's not available anymore publicly because it's under new ownership now and they would like you to purchase something and there's a sign on the door. And, and so I spoke to the Port Authority about that, but I, I did not get anywhere just to make it public knowledge. It is still non-public as far as they want customers to use that. But, I would suggest, you know, if they are concerned, to hire a security guard like we have at our City Hall and country fairs and some other businesses have a security guard just standing there. And I would love to see those restrooms area opened up because I know the Public Library has one and the Public Library is absolutely wonderful. Been using it for a long time. I did, I don't know if it's still available, but the YMCA let people take showers. I don't know. A couple of years back, I, a homeless person told me that they could take showers at the YMCA. And the city mission does provide their cooling chapel where people can sit in. The Smith Group came last year and with the Downtown Partnership as head of it, they did what we could have, public restrooms like at Perry Square and Griswold Park and fix up that bayfront area that's opened by the wharf there. But, I would love to see that, you know, things happening there to continue that. I did help and the office, Dave Rocco and Nathan helped with that as well. And I affirm our community and I'm so thankful. They actually had such an overwhelming response that the Downtown Partnership does have bottled water available to do this again. And I did help out with that. One thing is, when I was passing out, is I asked in a kind way to please, when they were done with the water bottle, to put it in the trash. And at the end, I, unfortunately, I'm one of those people that are a little OCD about trash and I did pick up a lot of water bottle tops and water bottles around both of the parks. So, I just wish we had more garbage cans or, or just, you know, really instill the need for taking care when we're done. And that, this goes for the beach, for our walks, anywhere you go, to just pick up and make the world a better place that way. Online was mentioned, how about taking food or making a donation to a community shelter or a pet shelter to make a difference that way instead of making noise. We celebrate and we have fun, but like Ms. Flores mentioned, so many people and pets have a problem with that. So, would like that to not be a bother. Be, I think it's just a matter of being aware of each other and helping each other out, you know, thinking about things like that. But I will help out in any way I can, promoting water, promoting cooling stations. It's what I love about our parks and it's always cooler by the water usually. So, I think, don't we have EMTA Shuttle Services that, yes, thank you Renee, that they, a lot of people go down to the Dobbin's Landing area because it is cooler down there. Thank you. Have a great 4th of July weekend.
Thank you. Controller's office? A report? Jason?
I have a report.
Okay. Attorney?
I have a report.
Okay. Renee?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things, I wanted to just remind everyone, thanks to CAFE, Cultures, Arts, Festivals, and Events of Erie. Tomorrow night, we'll be having our annual Lights Over Lake Erie display. That's also thanks to our sponsors, the Port Authority and Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. Fireworks will, will start at about 10 o'clock and will last about 17 minutes. About 700 fireworks will be set off. It will be very congested, so, you know, with the construction and everything, the police department will, will have a significant number of officers down there to help people who park downtown at one of the free ramps and walk down to the bayfront. They'll have folks helping cross at Holland and State Street. We also have the EMTA Shuttle Service. All of the details are on lightsoverlakeery.com for those who are planning to make the trip down. We just ask people to be careful, probably a little bit after 6 o'clock. State Street from, at the Bayfront Parkway will be closed going north. And anyone who needs to get down to the restaurants or the hotel will enter at Holland or SAS and take Front Street. Just trying to keep down on the vehicular traffic for the safety of the pedestrians because there will likely be a few thousand people down there. And we want everybody to have a fun time and nobody to get hurt. Also, this will kick off the start of our 814 Summer Concert Series. The first concert will be this Sunday, July 6th at 5:00 at Baker Field with the Berry King Blues Band. And also ILP Snack Shack will be selling food. And then Monday, Sounds of Summer will kick off, that's July 7th at 7:00 at the VA Medical Center with the Rooftop Project. All of the details for all six of those concerts, the six Sounds of Summer and the six 814 concerts are available on 814concerts.com. And that's thanks to UPMC Health Plan and Northwest Bank and Allen Zurcher and the Local 17 Music Fund for donating the funding so that we can have those free concerts out in the neighborhoods and the senior living centers. Just want to briefly thank, you know, council for entering into conversations to discuss the, the future of the zoo. We did have one meeting with members of City Council yesterday. We have another one today. Looking forward to working on that together. And then just wanted to draw attention to the CDBG funding that was passed today. This will enable DCED to start getting this funding out to all these community centers and shelters who are doing really good work in the community without this funding. You know, this enables them to have free after-school programs, free summer programs for children, keeping the shelters open. This is really important and we have to pay attention at the federal level, level about what happens in the future and be talking to our representatives about how important CDBG home and ESG funds are to every community. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, we are in the process of the community outreach phase of the Comprehensive Parks and Rec Plan. We actually launched a new website a couple of days ago. This has been in the works for about three years now. It's going to take a while for Google to catch up with the search capabilities of the website, but if you go to the website and go to government and go to Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources, we do have a link to the Comprehensive Parks and Rec page so that people can go there and look for information and, and keep an eye on. We will be updating that as we move through the process. But I know that at the World Refugee Day last week, some of our staff had a table there and were collecting input. They got input from, from 40 children who were attending the event, so that's a good start. But we look forward to getting people's input and priorities regarding parks and recreation in the City of Erie. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As a reminder, City Hall will be closed on Friday. Is Jeff Gibbons, is Jeff here? Did he make it? No, City Council has a certificate of recognition to Jeff Gibbons, better known to his coworkers as Lumpy, for 34 years of service. And we know that he's here today in the building, working, and so we'll make sure he receives this certificate of appreciation. Lori, I have nothing else.
City Council adjourns at 10:01 a.m. Members Flores, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon.